At this time, we were on number 2.03, which is the adoption of the agenda. Motion by Debra. All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Our next item is approval of minutes from our last meeting. Motion by Debra.
Second.
Second by Brenda. All in favor?
Aye.
So I say aye as well. At this time, we, um, Principal Wray, I think you have some recognitions you would like to...
I'd like to thank Superintendent Dial and the members of the board for moving the meeting down to Steen Hatcher and giving our students and parents a little bit easier access to the board meeting tonight. We really appreciate that. And the next thing I'd like to share is, as you all well know, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And it's, um, we look at it as more than just teachers. It's everybody who works at this school that touches the lives of our children. From the paraprofessionals to the bus drivers to the lunch ladies, it's all a group and team member, as well as the members of the community that come in and support us as well. And I thank also Mr. Lundey. And so what I'd like to do at this time, if you work here at this school and you support our children, will you please stand up? I'd like for you to be recognized. Ms. Harden, that would include you. Thank you so much. All right, so one of the integral parts of our school's success is a program called iReady. And so what iReady does, students take a diagnostic three times a year, and then through that diagnostic, students are put on a special learning path that helps them learn the skills that they need to be successful in the grade level that they're in. And so we would like to recognize the students in grades K through five who have passed the most lessons in their respective grades. So we're going to start, first of all, with our reading instruction. And so what we'll do, I think, would be to call those students all up at one time. As I call your name, please come up and receive your certificate. And then we can, I don't know if we could put all the students up here at one time, but we'll try that. We might have to split them into two groups. So our first student is in kindergarten. And so this student has passed 104 lessons in iReady this year. And that student is Bryce Hino. Please come on down, Bryce. All right, just stay right up here with me, okay? We're going to get all y'all up here at one time. All right, and in first grade with 137 lessons passed is Brian Ross. Come on down, Brian. All right, in second grade with 101 lessons passed is Kylie Preston. In third grade with 97 lessons passed, Hunter Landis. Fourth grader with 144 lessons passed, Kenton Wells. All right, and then in fifth grade with 130 lessons passed, Keian Carl. Come on down, Keian. All right, this way, Keian. All right, so where would be the...
Just in the center, right there.
The center would mean the board behind us?
Yes, with the board behind you would be fine.
All right, so let's look around, Bryce. You come to this end. Huh? Then Kylie. Honor. Thank you.
Show your certificate.
Yeah, hold your certificate. Don't cover your face.
All right, follow this way. Stingray.
Stingray. All right, and then moving on to our iReady math instruction. In kindergarten with 102 lessons passed, Cora Welsh. And this name's going to sound familiar in first grade, Brian Ross. All right, good job. All right, and in second grade with 76 lessons passed, Laney Tillman. All right, and another familiar name in third grade with 95 lessons passed, Hunter Landis. All right, in fourth grade with 117 math lessons passed, James Bray. All right, and then finally, we have our fifth grader with 90 math lessons passed, Kyra King. Come on down. Hold it up where they can see it.
And we like to see your smiling faces. I know you're trying to hide.
Like it or not.
Stingray.
I'm going to come down there and hold it for you. It's not going to happen.
Thank you very much. Now, let me say I personally apologize being a few minutes late, but got here for the awards. That's great. Well, this brings us down on the agenda to items of interest by the president. If we have anyone who'd like to address the board this evening, that would be the opportunity to do that. Do we have anyone? If not, we'll move on. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda this evening. So this brings us down to item 12.05. And that's an appointment of administrative personnel. Superintendent Dial is requesting the approval of two contracts for Jill Rudd as Director of Instruction. One is for June the first through June the 30th of '22 to work with our current Director of Instruction prior to her retirement. The second contract is from July the first of '22 through June the 30th of '23 as Director of Instruction for Petaleda County School District. All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Now, Ms. Agner seconded it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried.
Mr. Lundey, I would like to introduce Jill Rudd.
Okay.
Who is here with us tonight. We're very, very fortunate to get Ms. Rudd. There were several, several applications, and she went through the application process. She was our number one bid by committee.
And come highly recommend.
And come highly recommend.
Well, welcome aboard.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Good to have you on board.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. This brings us down to item 12.13. Uh, this is here, Grant's point leader requesting establishment of a homeless liaison position. Seven and a half hours, 10 months. Uh, Agner makes that motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Carlton seconded it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. And then item 12.15 is the job description for the homeless liaison. Motion. Motion by Ms. Carlton, second by Ms. Agner. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried.
Mr. Lundey, if I could interject. This is one of the CARES grants that just came out. It's, the purpose is to try to find some of the kids who've been displaced due to the COVID or in the economy. And we've got our social worker and our child find person who's been kind of handling some of this for us. But they will find them, get them enrolled, get them supplies. Now, this stretches out a little bit more. We will help them get the medical services they need and all that. And we'll have the funding to go over here with CARES grant and then some extra funding that we're getting through one of our entitlement grants that covers homeless. With the projection of number of homeless students that they say our county has, they've increased that $33,000. So hopefully, CARES is able to do something.
So the need is out there.
The need is out there.
Okay. Aye, any further discussion? Aye, if not, brings us down to item 1502. And this is a public hearing this evening. Policy number 6.106, dealing with teacher recruitment and retention. And this is an action item this evening. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak about this policy to the board before action is taken?
Well, I'm sorry. There was another community group that I was needing to recognize that I missed that opportunity earlier. Is there any way that we could revisit that?
You sure can.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. But we've had a great support from Rackup. The store across the street has been a huge supporter of our school. And we would like to recognize them at this time, if that would be a possibility, okay?
Not just you.
Jeannie, you would like to come up?
This is Michelle Hodges. And she... Okay. And she's, um, they donate a portion of all their earnings to the school. And they also support our school. Each Christmas, they invite our students to come over. And they have, you know, marked their prices down so the students can afford to purchase gifts for their families. And then any money that is earned through that, they donate it back to the school as well. So it's been a really big blessing to our school. And I would like to use this as an opportunity to express our appreciation to them for what they're doing. And we have a symbol of that right here. You can see they have given in excess of $4,000 to our school. So I really...
If the K5 children had a span, you'd get to span.
Just to let everybody know, this is $4,000 for six months after we got burnout and revealed. So this year, it should be quite a bit more. But we matched this to the Legion. So we, in six months, we gave away $8,000, plus the, what was it, $1,300 from Christmas, right there at it, so...
It's a huge blessing.
Wray, I'm glad you didn't forget them.
That's been a major mistake, huh?
I drove this giant check all the way from McLean's.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Well, this brings us down to the item 15.402. This is a public hearing on this policy. Do we have anyone to address the board this evening? If not, what's the care of the board?
I just need to highlight, we did discuss and approve this for advertising. However, I don't know if the change was not made because we're showing in Word docs is still the original.
Is that, is that the, you actually added in there? It says, like, I'll take it out.
Eligible for professional teaching certificate. It was not in there yet, or something. We had discussion about professional teaching certificate. Ms. Ball entered that there. Can you see it?
No, I just see what it's still saying doesn't go for old teachers.
It's number two, eligible for supplements.
Okay, I see what it's beat. Okay, yeah, all right.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Ms. Agner seconded it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Brings us down to item 18.01. We have two. Number one is, first of all, Ms. Anderson, Personnel Safety Specialist, is requesting the acknowledgement of the Petaleda County School District Emergency Operations Plan for '22, '23.
And that's what's in the stack.
Right, and that is something that has kind of kept confidential or safety protocols. Okay. Ms. Anderson, next to motion. Ms. Carlton seconded it. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item number two, Superintendent Dial is requesting the acknowledgement of the report from the Office of Inspector General with the results of our compliance audit in reference to our reports submitted to Division of Retirement from July '07 through November of '21. The report consists of finding recommendations for the district. Are you making a motion on that? Ms. Mathis seconded. Do you have anything you...
Yes, sir, we have responded to their findings and with recommendations they made, and we've taken care of them.
Okay. Any other questions or anything? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. Well, this brings us down, if I'm not mistaken, to the items of interest by the superintendent and the board. So, Mr. Superintendent, what do you have?
Yes, sir, I've got a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention and just take just a little bit of time to talk about. The first page is an update calendar for May. As you always know, May is a busy month for the Petaleda County School District. So I've got them in chronological order. I know it's impossible for us to be at each and every one of them. But I gave you this so you have an opportunity to go to it. It would be, it would be good. And I, the schools would appreciate it, and the students would appreciate it. Next...
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
This is up early on this, the nurse's painting, okay?
Yeah, because it's on the...
No, it's in June.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It says to be, um, about where it's going to be.
All right, the second page, back last board meeting when we were approving some new laptops. The question came out about our refresh schedule that MIS uses to replace those. So this is that schedule right there. And looking at what we're going to do, you know, based upon needs. And that's where the request for purchase went.
So this refresh, you're missing through the board laptop, so...
We've got y'all coming. That was in our discussion last week when I met with Ms. Valentine and Mr. Murphy and we were looking at this upcoming order. All right, the next one is, I did put this on the agenda because this is really the first run. We had our first insurance committee meeting. We did a budget analysis. And now this is what has been projected as of now that we will have it at the last day of June, which is the last day of the fiscal year. So back in July 1, which began the fiscal year, we had a beginning cash balance of $668,026.22. Our revenues that came from both board contribution and the premiums paid by our employees, we had $4,391,183.43. All right, here's the scary part. As of today, it is, you know, projected that our expenditures will be $4,758,581.79. So our projected fund balance that we're going to have is going to be $300,000. But if you figure in, by Florida statutes, we have, have to have enough in our savings to cover a runout of all of our claims for 60 days. And that would be $476,259.70. So our unreserved fund balance is sitting at a negative $175,000. So what does that mean? When you look at our revenues of $3.6 million of our premiums, plus we added $751,000 of CARES money that was allocated to cover medical expenses of our employees that suffered from the COVID. That gave us our total amount that we had in insurance. So to be made whole, we've got to cover $175,632 of our unreserved fund balance. And then we also have to come up with $476,259 to have available runoff for the Florida statute. So that means we've got to make up $651,891 between board contributions and our premiums. So this was first meeting with Gallagher, who handles our plan. And they're going back and looking at some numbers of what our premiums are going to cost. It's evident that we cannot ask our employees to cover all of this because of the increase in medical costs. The premiums are looking at 25% increase. So we will have to, you know, look at our board contribution along with what we feel like our employees can...
And we feel like the, getting out of the CARES.
Yeah, that's soft. That's soft, but that's what we know.
I can, when is the last time that we cleared out our insurance?
That question came out in the committee. And our Gallagher, between now and our next meeting in June, they're putting it out there to different issuers to see if they will close their eyes.
We've been with Gallagher, even though we went from straight Gallagher to Pace, still been Gallagher.
Right, well, Pace, we get Gallagher under the umbrella of our...
So that's the pool that's...
Right, that's the pool that we're in.
The pool that ran with Pace. So with Pace, do we, we have a choice to be in that pool? Does that make our insurance higher because we're in that pool?
Or is Dan Walton being in the pool?
The pool's from some...
So all of the other districts that are represented by Pace are in this pool. So Gallagher has all that, so that cuts back on their own.
And Pace is just north Florida.
Right.
You don't want it south of Tyler.
Well, that's a 25% increase from...
No, that's where our all premiums are really high because of the pool that you're putting up there.
And unfortunately, we've got five claims that are extremely restricted to the district. But they did not ask to get sick. They did not ask to catch these diseases. So it is still our obligation to cover them. And but that, those five claims makes up 90% of our costs.
So when's the next, like, date that the community...
The date's going to be in June.
In June.
In June.
Is that that last thing of 90% of the claims are filed secretly?
Pretty much.
I'd like to have a discussion with all of them later.
Okay, all right, Mr. Lundey, that's all. I saw you didn't use that guy.
I did have a quick question, Mr. Dial, so this one will not address. Um, looking at the calendar, there's two weeks on here that questions about... Because I understand the calendar may have changed since you gave us the last one. But I just want to make sure this is aggregate and not a typo. It got the high school national honor society convention on May 8th, a Sunday. Is that correct? Because I thought on that mission calendar, it was supposed to be a Monday.
It was not. It's not, really.
That could be a typo.
Okay, and the same thing for Steen Hatcher, that question. Has it been moved to the 22nd, which is a Sunday? Or is that supposed to pass a Sunday or... Is that correct?
No, ours is on a Monday.
Oh, so it's 3rd.
23rd. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Brown here.
Oh, okay. Um, congratulations to all our students that was recognized tonight. It's so exciting. This is, I promise you, this is my favorite time of the year when we get to celebrate our students' accomplishments and just to see the community and the parents to come out. It was great to come here tonight and it's still a full house. Again, thank you to the community. Thank you to Rackup, I think they're gone. But thank you to the community for the good support that we have down here. It just really speaks to the impact that the school and administration has on the community for it to always to have the support of the community. So I want to give my thank you to that. And again, Happy Teachers Appreciation Week, Happy Support Staff Week. Just again, the work that's going down in Steen Hatcher speaks for itself. So thank you again, Mr. Bray, for allowing us to be able to take part in this. Thank you, Jeannie, for suggesting it. But it's always good to be able to come down here and interact with the community and get the kids to be able to take part in, you know, the entire district recognitions. Again, it's just that time of the year, and I'm excited again. And Mr. Dial, it was on the consent agenda, but just finally about that we have this professional development certification program. It's on a percent. We've had the opportunity to read it, but I think that's going to really help our issues a lot in recruiting and then just being able to support our, um, schools with what we need in regards to instruction and staff. So I'm excited to see what opportunity that will bring. Maybe, you know, we'll get workshops or something to go and detail more about it. But I'm just happy that we're able to take part in that opportunity that DOE affords us and making sure we're doing everything we can to increase recruitment and to get what we need in our schools. Thank you again, Mr. Dial, for updating the calendar. And I'm excited about all the events. I hope I'm able to participate as much as I can. But again, it's just that time of the year, and I'm excited. Um, I got to stop by the prom on Saturday night. It was beautiful. It was so beautiful the way they decorated the theme and even just, you know, a different location down at Forest Capital. Yes, I actually drove to the high school and got there. My daughter was like, "My prom's over." And I was like, "No, it's not. It's at Forest Capital." That was my bad. But the students looked beautiful, those gowns. I don't know if they just get cured or more expensive, but the students, oh my God, they did themselves. And it was just again, it was a beautiful event. And there was a lot of TCH's staff there. So it looked like it was well attended and chaperoned. Other than that, Mr. Dial, what's your...
All right, thank you. Ms. Mathis?
Um, well, I'm happy to be home for this meeting. I really, I am. And, um, if y'all are going to Roy's afterward, I'll see you there. I'm going to make the Rackup ladies there. And if you get a chance, look at the ball field. And, I mean, we signed that joint agreement with the county. And the parents, a lot of them are out, out here. But they have done such an amazing job of fixing the field up. They put a scoreboard up the other day. I mean, it just is, it's beautiful. And I was working at the concession stand. And one of the kids, I see a lot of baseball players sitting out here actually, and they are really good ball players. I just, they're, all of them are. But I was watching them play, and I was talking to Gina, the lady of the Boys and Girls Club. And one of the boys just slammed the ball, slammed to the fence, and he was about this big. And I said, "Who was that?" And she told me who it was, and it was one of the little Corbin boys. And I said, "No wonder, that's so-and-so's..." I went to say "son," and I said "grandson." I said, "My goodness, I played softball on the same field with their grandparents." And, I mean, it's just such a history that these kids are out there now running those same, that same field. And it just really was like a moment that, and you feel it when you're there. I think we all do. When you're out there, you feel the nostalgia of it and the pride of being a part of it. So I just can't say enough about it and how special it is to have it. So I thank you all very much for working with our local recreation program and that we can have that district property. And of course, the county for coming in and helping us, you know, with the fields and all the parents. I mean, it just, it takes a lot. It takes the whole community, but it takes the team of, the parent involvement team has just really done a lot here. When Michelle came, and you have to work really hard in a town this size to raise $4,000, or $1,000. And y'all know that. It's not an easy thing to do. So I think the thing that most, and that was her second $4,000 donation, wasn't it, Jeanne? I think she's.
She had donated prior to that, yes.
Yes, I mean, she's at over $10,000 now, and the last year and a half between the two Santa shops and before the store burnt and after. And raffle desks, and to have somebody come in and do that, and I just really enjoy working with her, and I know how much it means. It's not an easy thing to be raising money as a parent or students in a town this small. There's not a lot of doors to knock on, and so every little bit helps. And so I really appreciate them being here and doing that, and all the kids. And I was talking to Chrissy, and we, I think we're gonna get to do the Grinch hopefully this year. We're talking, we've already been talking about it. So, parents, I was actually scoping out your kids for little boos while we were here. So I saw some that were making some great ones, so, and some that have already been booed, so looking forward to working with them again. And Mr. Dial found out today that he's been voted into the Educators Hall of Fame in Tater County. So I don't want to refuse that because it's such an honor. And he and Jan offer, yes, also.
Well, thank you. Ms. Agner?
It's basically what Debra said and what Jeanne said, and I appreciate y'all inviting us down here. Anytime you're in, Carrie, and you want to come to a meeting, you're always welcome. Thanks for sharing your children with us. They are adorable. I love a small community. I think it's just close knit, and everybody loves everybody, and everybody helps everybody. And that's a good thing for children to see. And we've got baseball going on right now. I know Coach Dial, I call him Coach, because that's what I'm remembering now. He is, his grandson's playing in the district playoffs tonight. I've got a grandson playing in the district playoffs tonight. So we're missing that, but we really appreciate you inviting us, and we thank all the ones that came out and the donations. And we appreciate Mr. Bray and what he's done for this school and this community. I know when I first got on the board, it was questioned what was gonna happen to this school. And I'm so thankful to see so many students and so many people involved in it. That's it. And congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Carlton.
Okay, thank you. Basically, I can repeat everything. But I did want to mention that I was fortunate enough to go to the signing at the high school for Jason Hartfield. Was an academic as well as an athletic scholarship, so that was really good. And it was a real good accomplishment for him. And also, the middle school band had their concert the other night, and that was excellent. That is a very talented group of students. And not only did they play their instruments, there was some singing going on, so it was very good. I appreciate all of our teachers and our support staff. Thanks, Mr. Bray. Appreciate everything you do down here, pulling it all together. And, Mr. Dial, congratulations, and to Jan also. So it's a pretty good accomplishment for both of them going into the Hall of Fame. And, yes, that's basically it.
Do we know the date for the Hall of Fame?
I think.
Anything else? If not, I want to concur with what the board has said. Once again, it's a privilege to be down here in Stehatchi. I always enjoy coming. And it seems like there's always something good going on down here, so that's a good thing. So we're glad of that, and we appreciate this opportunity tonight. We're glad that you came. And so with that said, if nothing else, do I have a motion to second that we adjourn? All right, Ms. Dunham makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? This meeting gets adjourned.